Good evening. The October 24th, 2023 meeting of the Marion County School Board is now called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. At this time, I will read our board motto, which reads, "We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success." For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please silence their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board on a regular agenda item or on matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime-green colored form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Present.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Olivia Biddinger, Donnellan High School.
Here.
Bryce McTeer, North Marion High School.
Here.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our inspiration and pledge, Dr. Gullett, good evening. I believe you have someone to introduce for us.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I certainly do. I'm going to ask Ms. Deb Riedel to come forward, and she is going to introduce some very special guests tonight that have participated in the Advanced Scholarship Opportunity. And I'm going to tell you what "Advanced" is, adding distinctive value and notable college experience. So really excited to share some of the testaments from those who have experienced this grant. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gullett, Board Chair Campbell, and members of the board. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing a very special group of people who are taking a big step into their future. Marion County Public Schools is proud and excited to be able to offer an opportunity for our employees that will assist them in furthering their education and in building their capacity in critical content areas. This opportunity was made possible under the direction of Ms. Talbert Irving, Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and through two partnerships, a partnership between elementary curriculum and grants and federal programs under the direction of Dr. Stacy Varner, and through our second partnership with the University of Central Florida, in which our agreements are on the board agenda for approval this evening. Both Dr. Elizabeth Hoffman and Dr. Maria Bush have been instrumental at UCF in helping us with this journey. In the spring of 2022, 26 individuals applied for and accepted our Marion County Advanced Scholarship that will allow either paraprofessionals to earn an online bachelor's degree in elementary education through UCF's E2P2 program, or current teachers to earn an online master's degree in math or science at the University of Central Florida. The Advanced Scholarship will cover the cost of tuition and books for both cohorts of students. Students earning their bachelor's degree in elementary education at UCF will develop pedagogy and content knowledge needed to become a successful teacher of students in grades kindergarten through sixth grade, and will meet the requirements for certification in elementary education. Students earning their master's degree in math or science will gain a deeper understanding of educational theories and effective teaching strategies in the math or science classroom. Building teacher capacity in STEM-related areas will allow them to apply their knowledge to current practice and better serve our students in those critical areas. According to the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics, from 2022 to 2032, employment in STEM occupations will increase by 10.8%, as opposed to non-STEM occupations, which will increase by 2.3%. This means that an increased number of our current students will enter into careers and STEM fields in the future. Ensuring our teachers are well-equipped to deliver high-quality instruction to our students is our top priority and aligns with Goal One of our district's strategic plan, student success. I am joined at the podium by Tayana McConico, paraprofessional at Reddick Collier, Robert Schmidt, teacher at Bellevue High School, and Madeline Van De Venter, who teaches at East Marion Elementary, who will each say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Tayana McConico, and I started the Advanced Scholarship Program this fall. So far, it's been a really great opportunity. UCF is very thorough and very helpful. Throughout the whole process, they walk you through it step by step, and then Stacy Varner and Deborah Reed have also been instrumental in guiding me through this process. The Advanced Scholarship Program has provided a way for me to pursue teaching. Before, I wasn't sure how I would go about getting my degree or how I would afford those costs and everything, but the scholarship is really allowing teachers and other people like me who would love to be teachers, who haven't had the opportunity, to pursue that. So it's also beneficial for our students because we all know that there is a struggle to fill teaching positions, not just in Florida, but nationwide. My school is still looking for a fifth-grade teacher. We haven't had one the whole school year so far. But what sets this scholarship apart from other attempts to fill this problem is that we are hiring and they're sourcing from within. So paraprofessionals already have experience in the school system. They see what school is like day-to-day, and they're prepared for all of the challenges that come along with that. So I think the difference in this scholarship is making is it's going to put prepared educators into the school system for our students so that they can have a real chance at being successful. Thank you.
Good evening. As Deborah said, my name is Rob Schmidt. I'm an Algebra I teacher at Bellevue High School. I was asked to say a few words. So first, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for this opportunity, for what it says to students, for what it says for parents, for what it says to other educators in the county, that we value the quality of our math teachers. For me, I wanted to go back to college for some time now, but I'm also my family's sole provider, and I have to make sure that ends meet. With the two-year-old son at home, even with the second job, this has been very difficult. Adding the extra cost of a grad school on top of that just wasn't going to happen, not if I wanted to be able to afford diapers and daycare. So this summer, when I seen this scholarship being advertised, I knew that I had to look into it. Obviously, financially, this helps out a lot. What I love most about this program, however, is that it can be completed online. I don't have to go to UCF. I can go on my own pace. My schedule is absolutely insane even before factoring in these classes, so I really appreciate how it was designed to account for the flexibility needs of teachers, especially at this point in the year. As for the impact this is having in my classroom, only two months into the program, obviously those differences are a little bit subtle. My current courses include Clinical Supervision and Advanced Strategies for Teaching Geometry at the secondary level, but I'm growing to appreciate teaching in a very different way. What I've been most excited about, however, are the day-to-day interactions with my students. I believe that developing interpersonal connections with our kids is an essential part of the education process, especially in math, where we have to make learning for learning's sake meaningful, sometimes even if it isn't always so clear. We have to be willing to share a little bit about ourselves, take right action, and model what we want our kids to do. We can't expect them to develop a culture of lifelong learning just on their own. They need to see us. We need to be able to back up our words with actions. To me, being able to talk to my students about the college experience, to hear their thoughts and reactions, and answer their questions, it makes it very real to them. It's so fun and something I look forward to every day and in the immediate future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Van De Venter. This is my third year teaching at East Marion Elementary. I graduated from West Virginia Tech University as a student athlete with a bachelor's degree in biology. I did not know then that teaching would be in my future. When I started teaching, I knew I found my passion. There's a real joy when you see a student light up because of a learning experience. I started teaching as a support facilitator, and I'm now teaching fifth-grade math and science. I enjoy making math and science as hands-on and interactive as possible to prepare my students for many STEM-related jobs. I feel so honored to have received this Advanced Scholarship to further my education in science at the University of Central Florida. I applied for the Advanced Scholarship, hoping to get some relief from the student debt many educators still have today. This master's program will help me develop the skills and knowledge needed to implement new teaching strategies in my classroom. It will also help me adapt to the changing needs of my students and stay current with the best practices in education. Building capacity in our teachers helps students receive quality instruction in math and science-related courses. Although I'm still very early in the program, I have already started to use some strategies I have learned inside my own classroom. I am so grateful to have received this scholarship for my master's degree. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask the rest of our employees, who are now UCF Knights, to please stand up and be recognized. We are very, very proud of them. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of those UCF Knights, if you will come forward, we would love to come down and take a picture with you. Thank you, Ms. Riedel, for bringing these amazing educators to us tonight for this special opportunity of inspiration and pledge. Looking ahead at the agenda, which we're not quite there yet, but the items that were spoken about during tonight's inspiration, both the elementary education pathway for paraprofessionals, as well as the master's online pathway for professionals, will be on our consent agenda this evening at items 11.1 and 11.2. So looking forward to the opportunity to continue advancing that. Thank you so much. Dr. Gullett, I believe we have a couple of recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do. I have two items, and the first I'm going to start with is our wonderful new school board representatives that are here, our students. I'll give you a little background to introduce you. Bryce McTeer, seated next to Vice Chair Thrower, is from North Marion High School as senior in the Cambridge ACE Program. He is a member of the Spanish Ecology Cambridge Ambassador's Clubs, National Honor Society, and has already logged over 100 community service hours. Fantastic. And so Bryce wants to pursue a law degree and is waiting to hear back from his colleges and universities of choice. So welcome to the school board. And then Olivia Biddinger, who is next to me, is a student at Donnellan High School, and she will graduate with her AA degree in the spring from the College of Central Florida. She has been recognized as Miss DHS. She's the band captain of the Marching Tigers Band, president of the National Honor Society, and she's involved with Mu Alpha Theta as well, and plays tennis. Been playing tennis for three years. Wonderful. I used to play tennis in high school also. And so she wants to be a pediatrician when she finishes her studies. So welcome to being part of the school board. We're glad to have both of you here. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Yes, welcome to the board. As we began this school year, we have started with having student representatives on the school board, and every quarter, we will be changing out the representatives. So this is the first meeting for Bryce and Olivia. Welcome on behalf of the school board. I know that we've all already said our individual greetings to you, and we'll continue to do so, but this has been an amazing opportunity to hear directly from student voice while we are here. I had the opportunity to share with someone today that we know as school board members, it's vitally important that we keep students first and top of mind in all of our board meetings, and I feel that having student representatives on the board with us right here at the dais every board meeting just further exemplifies what we're trying to do in putting students first. So welcome again. We'll look forward to getting to know you over the next few months. Dr. Gullett, I understand we have another recognition.
We do. Thank you. I'm going to bring Ms. Hughes forward, who's our interim Director of Professional Leadership and Learning, and we have a little bit of a surprise board, so we'll be getting up again in a minute. We have a very special partnership between transportation and this department with a rebrand of our Focus Van for our family engagement. So Ms. Hughes, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Campbell, Vice Chair Thrower, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Student Representatives, and Attorney Powers. Many of you here today may be familiar with the Title I Family Engagement Vehicle that were frequent schools throughout our district. Tonight, I have the honor of reintroducing the Title I Family Engagement Van as the Family Focus Mobile Unit. In December of 2022, the Family Engagement Team set out to re-envision how the vehicle could evolve to meet the needs of families. The collaboration continued this school year under the leadership of Ms. Talbert Irving and Ms. Barb Dobbins. As a result of the collaboration between family engagement and transportation, specifically the bus garage, we now have a Family Focus Mobile Unit designed to meet students and families where they are throughout the district. The Family Focus Mobile Unit is equipped with Wi-Fi, Chromebooks, free educational resources, and useful information that families can use to support their child's educational journey. You will be able to find this van at schools, district-sponsored family engagement events, and community-based events. It is our hope that the newly renovated van will reach many families and communities. I want to recognize our new family engagement team that will implement the vision of the vehicle, Dr. Amy Cabello, Coordinator of Multicultural Education, Delonica Raymond, and Marlene Lopes, Program Specialists. Also, I would like to extend a special thanks to the Professional Leadership and Learning Team and our ESOL Team. Last, but very important, there are some unsung heroes that the public never sees, but I want to recognize. If they can stand. These individuals worked behind the scenes, dedicating their skills and talents to this project. Some were not able to make the school board meeting this evening, but their names will be called to honor the countless hours of work and dedication. Mr. Paul Grosselfinger was our fleet manager. Robert Baron was the interior design and mobile classroom. Matthew Smith did all of the painting. Aaron Hicks took care of graphics. Bobby Hartigan, the outside wiring and lighting. William Sur, mechanical work, along with Javier Cruz Rosario. Stephen Clegg Horn took care of our estimates, and John Webb and Vicki Key supported our purchasing. We look forward to the impact the Family Focus Mobile Unit will have on our students and families and communities. So now you want to see it, right? If you actually exit to the left of the stage.
Are you going to get to really see it?
I'm sorry?
Are we really going to get to see it?
Yes.
Like we're really walking out the door?
Yes.
Okay. Exit stage left is that way?
Yes.
Okay, let's go take a look. We're going on a field trip.
An unofficial recess. Thank you, Mr. Christian, for the ability to help us with that as we are live streaming this, but we all just had the opportunity, everyone in the audience and this platform, was able to go outside and see this amazing equipment, I guess, rolling, moving equipment that Ms. Hughes was just speaking about. Dr. Gullett, would you like to share anything else with us?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're hoping you saw all the resources that are packed into that vehicle. Such a bright, cheerful way to engage our families throughout our community with resources that'll help their student be successful, including multiple languages, right? So, I'll let Ms. Hughes share a little more of the details behind how this will be used, but really excited about putting this on the road.
Yes, we're very excited about it. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. We have resources on it, and just to give you a little background on it, so when we initially started talking about refreshing it and putting resources in it, we did talk to several departments about what types of things would support their mission and the vision of their work, so order supplies to put on this vehicle so that we're able to really have relevant resources for families. So, it will be at, like I've mentioned before, our family engagement events, district. It also will be scheduled for schools like it was before. So, the principals can ask for it to be a request, for it to be at their school's events. We do have one individual that will be the driver for it, but I think we can all jump in and go with it because it's a van and not a school bus that requires a CDL. So, we are really excited about that. So, we wanted to keep it small, but we wanted to be resourceful and be able to partner with Marion County and a lot of different agencies in the community to let them know we're here and provide families with the resources that they need.
That's amazing. Thank you so much. It was a wonderful opportunity to hop on that van. I'm not going to call it a bus. We're not hopping on the bus. We hopped on the van, and we're able to see all of the resources. And I envisioned perhaps even talking with, I'm just thinking out loud, Ocala Police Department when they have their Polar Patrol going around, that they would be great tandem opportunities to partner with them, because I know they go to many community events where students are and student families are. So, just thinking out loud. I see you taking notes, Ms. Hughes. I'm sure the board has additional ideas and thoughts on that, but that really was a lot of fun. Yes, Reverend Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hughes, thank you for that, bringing that forward with the Family Focus Mobile Unit. For those that did not get a chance to see it, I hope that they do get to see it. I have one problem with this. My problem with this is there's only one. Marion County is the size of Rhode Island, and you need more than one of these. So, I'm hoping that folk will hear me, and I'm saying it very clearly, that we'll get some community partners to get at least four more of these, because we, as large as our district is, this needs to be in every area of our district to act, to actually make a difference in making, meeting the needs of our people. So, thank you for this. So, community partners, I'm reaching out to you. We need some help. We need four more of these, and we need them as soon as possible.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Absolutely. Yes, Ms. Conrad?
I just want to give Ms. Hughes a hard time for saying, because I had a nice, long meeting with her on Friday, and she did not say a peep. Not a peep. So, I just want to-
It was a surprise.
What Reverend Cummings says, said, "It was just what a blessing to our community." Really excited about putting this into action, and I fully support adding to that-
Yes.
That van.
Yes, that-
How exciting.
Fleet of vans is what we're looking for, potentially. That would be amazing. And because the general population that wasn't present in this meeting and/or watching this didn't have an opportunity to see it, perhaps we'll see it feature on an upcoming superintendent's-
We will.
Okay, perfect. Weekly wrap-up as she does. So, any additional comments about it, board? Nope? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate that, Ms. Hughes. Thank you, Dr. Gullett, for bringing that to us. That was fun. What a nice little surprise. Dr. Gullett, anything else from recognition-
That actually concludes my recognition, and no more surprises. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, moving on to the donations, we'd like to recognize a special donation the district has recently received, a $4,000 donation from Jennifer Elliott to Stanton Weersdale Elementary School for the Care Closet to help needy families with household supplies, school supplies, and clothing, et cetera. So, thank you so much, Ms. Elliott, and to all who contribute to our schools on a daily and weekly basis. It certainly does make a difference. Our business community, our individuals, all throughout Marion County make a huge impact all throughout our schools, and we're very grateful. Dr. Gullett, would you like to make a recommendation on this evening's agenda?
Yes, thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 24, 2023, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-21.1, D-21.2, D-21.3, and D-21.4 that have been placed under discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower. Second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 5, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 10, 2023, school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Good evening, Ms. Martinez. Can I please have a proof of publication for this evening?
The notice for the October 24, 2023, board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on October 13, 2023. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you so much. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's tough to follow after you guys have seen all that, and I get to listen to boring attorney stuff, but in compliance with Section 284.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers. A written summary of these procedures, along with public speaker forms, are available in the table in the lobby. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Thirty minutes have been allotted for public comment. Each speaker will have five minutes at a time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice on screen to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speaker presentations must be on a specific agenda item or matters on which the school board customarily takes action, and those will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order received by the school board's assistant. Speakers of meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. The use of any student's name, identifying references to students, or identification of students or their families is strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6 and Section 770.03 Florida statutes, statements concerning any individual person must be submitted to the superintendent in writing a minimum of 24 hours before the school board meeting. Statements made at the meeting must follow any statement submitted verbatim. School board will not permit anyone to speak who has not followed this procedure and will end the presentation of a speaker who deviates from the text except in response to questions. The school board has a right to refuse to broadcast or record statements which it reasonably considers to be slanderous or defamatory. The school board has a right to provide copies of statements to a person who's a subject of such statements. Statements made by public speakers do not necessarily reflect the position, endorsement, or approval of the school board. The school board is simply permitting the person to make a public statement at a public meeting and does not assume responsibility for its contents, results, or consequences. Each speaker agrees to indemnify the school board as to any claims for damages, losses, or expenses related to content of the speaker's statement. Audiovisual presentations or handouts are permitted, if provided to the school board's assistant at least 48 hours prior to the meeting, and if compatible with current equipment available in the school boardroom. Audiovisual presentations will be limited to a total of five minutes. Based on time considerations of the meeting, the school board may, by majority, rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, and schedule public comment in a different position on the agenda, or eliminate public comment section altogether. Persons can request to speak to the school board without being televised. Non-televised presentations will be held at the conclusion of all televised portions of the meeting. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements, Madam Chair. That concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do, Madam Chair. We have one speaker, Ms. Paula Pfeifer.
Hello, my name is Paula Pfeifer, P-I-F, as in Frank, E-R, and I have a story to share. By show of hands, how many people are left-handed? One, okay. Several centuries up until the 1950s and 60s, if you were born left-handed, you were thought to be some sort of demon, unfortunately. Some children were harmed for being left-handed. When you know better, you do better. What would you do if the first three words your obstetrician said to you after giving birth is, "It's a boy," but then a few years later, you found out your doctor was wrong? That's exactly what happened to me and has happened to millions of parents around the world for centuries. One in 3,000 births result in a transgender child. Being transgender is one of the most misunderstood medical conditions in history. You want proof my child was born that way? Here is the latest evidence. In 2018, Dr. Julie Baker from the European Society of Endocrinology discovered through MRI brain scans that transgender brains are more like the desired gender from an early age. In 2020, Doctors Graham Tyson and Lawrence Lehman identified rare genetic variants, mutations, in estrogen receptors in the brains of transgender persons. A doctor suggested my daughter was either my gay son or transgender daughter when she was two years old, based on her stereotypical girl behaviors, and I chose to love my child unconditionally. Every year since the age of four, my daughter, who at the time looked like a son that had male genitalia, insisted on going to see Santa Claus in person. She wanted Santa to know that her Christmas list that consisted of Barbies and Disney princesses wasn't a mistake. After she received her pink Barbie castle on Christmas morning, she said, "Mama, Santa really does love me." And I replied, "Of course he does." At age 15, she told me she needed to go on hormone blockers to block the testosterone. Age 16, she received estrogen. And age 18, she had gender confirmation surgery. My daughter is 23-year-old, high-fashion runway model and actress Hunter Pfeifer, and she was recently in Vogue magazine for Sarafsky Crystal, and has walked runways for Prada in Italy and Valentino in Paris. I know it's hard to believe because I'm 5'3", but it's true. She has a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree from UF. She's as beautiful on the inside as she is on the outside. Socrates said it best, "I cannot teach anybody anything, I can only make them think." I hope and pray that my words today make you think and continue to support the needs of our transgender children in the public school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeifer. Did we have any other speakers, Ms. Martinez?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items C-10.1 through C-20.2, the exception of items D-20.1, D-20.2, D-20.3, and D-20.4 that have been placed under discussion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad, and actually, those numbers are D-21.1, D-21.2, D-21.3, and D-21.4. Thank you for the motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. Item D-21.1, may I have a motion to approve grant application IDEA B-K-12 entitlement 2023 through 2024, and IDEA B preschool entitlement 2023, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings. Dr. Gullett, I understand you have some information for this item, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Hembrecht is going to come forward, and board, we put this under discussion with the large dollar amount and how we spend the IDEA for our exceptional student educator, education students, and Dr. Hembrecht is going to provide some context to this item. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening. So, I wanted to just take a moment to tell you a little bit about how these funds are allocated. So, the state, based on numbers, gives us an allocation for K-12 entitlement, but then also for the pre-K portion. One of the first things that we have to do is we have to allocate for our proportionate share for private schools, so for children that are placed in private schools by their parents. And so, there's a proportionate share, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that goes directly to private schools. It can go to support professional technical services, so speech-language OT. So, some money is set aside for those services that we would provide to those students at private schools, as well as in our public schools. We have set aside proportionate shares of salaries for paraprofessionals, behavior techs, program specialists, behavior specialists, and so forth. So, I just wanted to kind of share with you a little overview of how those dollars are spent. As you can see in the board agenda, the total amount of funding is, it is split into those two grants.
Thank you, Dr. Hembrecht. Are there any questions or comments about this agenda item? Vice Chair.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Hembrecht. I'm glad that we have this money coming our way because we have so many students with unique abilities, and it is our honor and task to serve them all as best we possibly can. So, I'm glad that this was put under discussion just to, you know, illustrate the support that we are getting to make this happen for each and every individual student that needs it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any additional comments? Thank you, Dr. Hembrecht. At $11.5-plus million, this certainly is an item that's worthy of discussion, and rather than being in consent. So, thank you for that, Dr. Gullett, and I echo Vice Chair Thrower's comments that it's amazing that the money is available for us to be able to certainly serve the needs of our students who may have unique abilities that need a little extra assistance from time to time. So, if there's no further comments or discussion on this item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, with the Marion Education Support Professionals and the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades? That's MESP and IUPAT. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Board, is there any additional discussion on this particular item? Vice Chair?
When it's on for discussion, I feel like there's some things that should be said, and I'm glad to see this on our agenda tonight because we did talk about it at a work session, and, you know, we're always looking for ways that we can cover the gaps that we know that we have in terms of finding all of the right employees, you know, and getting them in the right positions for the right reasons so that we can do what we need to do. So, I really appreciate seeing this, and I'm definitely ready to vote yes.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Chair. If there's no further discussion, I'll just mention, I always appreciate it whenever there's cross-participation, and so this is two unions that have said yes. We understand temporary assistance is needed in schools and transportation, and these employees, based on this new, these two MOUs, will be able to assist in that, in helping us with temporary bus drivers in multiple different temporary positions. So, thank you so much. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Professional Services Selection Recommendation for Architectural Design Services for Osceola Middle School New Gymnasium, Project 24-109? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Is there any discussion on this item? Dr. James?
I will be recusing myself from the vote. We, as a committee, landed on Walker Architects to design the build for the new Osceola Middle Gym. We had great discussion and problem-solving conversation around ways we can strategically place the gym, potentially even in a different spot, so then we could use the existing gym to maybe eventually turn into a classroom wing even, to try and address multiple issues. And one of the biggest things that I appreciate about this process is that Mr. Coff, the principal, was a part of the discussions, and as we sat around a table and interviewed architects, the principal said the space is not working for him. And so, I think that that is the most important voice at the table. If the principal says that the space that is existing is not working, and it's also not safe for children, which is why we're not using it, we have to hear that and then try to come up with a plan that's going to provide a better product for students and also serve all the needs that we're trying to accomplish. So, I'm proud of the team and the work that they've been doing in the interviews. Walker Architect is a great firm, and I know that we're going to be able to provide a product that is meeting the needs of the school, and also looking forward in like future planning and what we can actually accomplish with maybe the space that's going to be left, so.
Thank you, Dr. James, and thank you for serving on that committee. I know we say that often, but we've been approving a lot of building things lately, so thank you. Any additional commentary on this particular item? Vice Chair?
Thank you. I'll just say that that's really great to hear, Board Member James. It's a small footprint over there, and so space utilization is critical. So, that kind of creative thinking and really hearing from the- So that kind of creative thinking and really hearing from the folks that are utilizing the small footprint every day is a testament to the good work that's going on in that area. So thank you.
Thank you. There's no further discussion on this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the renewal discount catalog bids three eight eight two AH, three eight eight three AH, three eight eight four AH, three eight eight five AH, three eight eight six AH, three eight eight seven AH, and three eight 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 AH for school supplies and equipment? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have anything to add to this item that does not include a three or an eight? I'm just kidding.
Well, no, I do not, except to say that obviously this is a large dollar amount, and so that's why it's under discussion. It's a renewal for our discount catalog for, for what you would describe as pretty routine purchases, including teaching supplies, equipment, special needs equipment, vocational supplies. And if you have any specific questions, Board, we're happy to answer, but pretty routine items, just a, it's a large dollar amount because we're serving a lot of students.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, for placing it under discussion for that purpose at a dollar amount, more than a million dollars. It's always good to at least have it on a discussion. If there is any additional discussion from the board, any questions, comments, or thoughts on this item? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. We're now moving into Board Committee Reports and Concerns. I'll first note that our next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for this week, October twenty-sixth at nine AM. We also have another administrative briefing and work session scheduled for November second, twenty twenty-three at nine AM. So we will move on to comments from those sitting here at the dais. Ms. Martinez, anything from Board Services?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, anything from Legal?
Just that we do have updates for our policies that are coming up soon. We have pushed out the recommended updates that we have that are for federal and state compliance to staff. So those of us who are, so those of you who are in staff who have any updates you want to make, please make sure that those are included within the next couple of weeks so that we can get them on for advertising. I will most likely at our next work session be requesting some time for a work session that is compliant with rulemaking and development times that we need in order to try to get these in front of the board for a special session at a special school board, school board meeting, and special work session in order for us to review all those things. Of course, it is very difficult to know exactly how long it'll take because it depends on how many policies we have and whether some of them may require more discussion, some may require less. So I'll be setting that up in the near future. And of course, any board members, if you know of policies that you have identified that you have concerns, we have to advertise them in advance to which ones we're doing. So anyone who has that, please reach out to me, let me know, so that I can include those on the list of ones that will be brought up for our updates and review.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. So we have upcoming work sessions to talk policy again, hopefully ahead of the legislative session where they're going to, I'm sure, make new laws that we'll need to address in policy. Thank you, Attorney Powers. We'll be looking for those calendar dates upcoming. Dr. Gullett, anything from Superintendent's Office?
Just briefly, I think you all know this is Red Ribbon Week, and so our schools are working really hard to try to educate our students in, in drug prevention. So thank you to everyone who's worked really hard on those and some really creative ways to educate our students. Also, tomorrow is Family Focus. We have a virtual session, and we're actually going to be educating our families on financial literacy. So I think that's going to be really helpful for our families as they engage with students and even some of their college choices and, and financial opportunities there. And it equates with our curriculum in financial literacy, which is relevant for our students. And one other item, I know there are many, but I'm just hitting some of the highlights, fine arts for Ocala this weekend, and so we'll be celebrating our amazing, talented students and those with their artistic representation out there, musical as well. So we look forward to celebrating them this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. There's a lot going on. It's just that time of year, certainly. And actually, right now, I'll go ahead and go to our student representatives. So I'm so grateful, I know we, as a board, are so grateful to have you representing the student bodies of your respective schools and students in general, all throughout Marion County. So we'd love to give you the opportunity to say a few words. Olivia?
Yes, I am a high school student. Obviously, I am a senior, and I think that all of these things sound great, especially I like the fine arts. I'm a marching man, so I really appreciate that, and I think it's nice to focus on the learning. I know we went out and saw the learning bus and things like that, and it's really nice to see that we're outreach-ing to those farther parts of Marion County and trying to get out there and just reach all of those students because they don't get reached very often, and it's nice that we're making that effort.
Thank you so much. Bryce, anything for us this evening?
I like to appreciate the large sum of donations that were provided to the school board because all the school supplies that are needed for children to be better made in school are definitely beneficial to their future in education, and I do appreciate that the van that, that allows children who don't have access to the resources that they need at home are given access to that within their communities, and that isn't like they have the Spanish books in there and not just limited to like one language and like a broader aspect.
Great. Thank you, and welcome again to the board. We'll be looking forward to hearing more from you over the coming weeks. Dr. James?
Yes, good evening. So such good stuff happening, and I wanted to take a few minutes to acknowledge a few different things. Mr. Schmidt was here tonight. I worked with him when I was at Bellevue High School, so it was nice to see a familiar face. He was one of the individuals who's using the scholarship to earn his master's degree. We hired him at Bellevue while I was there, and he taught Algebra I to a group of students that needed a lot of support. So it's wonderful that he's getting opportunity to grow. I also visited Bellevue High School today and got to chat with Ms. Guest, and when I walked in, the lobby looked completely different from the last time I was there, and I, I was like almost thrown off because it looked so different. And after we talked, I said, this looks great, I love the desk. And what Ms. Guest took time to mention was that she had the opportunity to share what she needed, and then that's what was tried, they tried to meet her exactly with what she needed. And to my point earlier, I do really think that the Facilities Department is trying very hard to listen to the staff on campuses and hear what they need and try and meet them as close as they can to where they are. So that was wonderful. The lobby looks beautiful, and I love the door. I'm sure Mr. McFadden also loves the door, so that it feels a little bit more secure and safe, and so that was wonderful. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to go to North Marion High School's homecoming football game with my husband, who's an alumni, and he had not been to a game, I'm not, I don't think, I'm not sure he'd been to a game since he graduated, so it had been a minute. And we went, and I, I'm sharing because I want to share with the community that football games are a great family event. I took the girls, my, my two daughters, who are six and four, and it was the homecoming event, and Willa could not stop talking about the princesses on the field. It was the highlight of her evening. She was recounting everything about the princesses. So as we are wrapping up this homecoming season, I would encourage our families to go buy a ticket and go to our football games because the homecoming games especially are quite a spectacular event. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Ostanik, growing from a countenary specialist to an assistant principal. That is wonderful for her. I wanted to also, we had talked about the Fort King Festival that's coming in December, and Ms. Jarvis has actually, with the City of Ocala, has gotten a donor who's going to be printing off a hundred and fifty pages of tickets for every school and sending them out closer to Thanksgiving so they can get distributed to students and hopefully incentivize free vouchers for our students to go and attend the Fort King Festival in December. And then finally, I just wanted, I, I made an effort to mention a couple of meetings ago, I was hopeful we would have an impact fee update at every meeting, just to acknowledge where we are in the process. So I just want to see if Dr. Gullett has anything, or Jeremy Powers has anything to add to where we are in this beautiful journey of impact fees.
Thank you, Dr. James. And I believe our work session on this Thursday is going to be devoted to educational benefit districts. Attorney Powers?
Yes, for Thursday's work session will be regarding educational benefit districts, and that's the section that staff is working on now. I don't have any further report for what staff is doing as to the other portion of additional categories. That's something I'm not privy to at the moment.
Dr. Gullett, is there anything additional to add, or maybe we'll just have that conversation on Thursday?
Sure. Madam Chair, we, we ask for those questions to be answered. I know last Wednesday that my team sent an email again to the City of Ocala, and we are waiting for some information. There was a follow-up call today, and we have not yet received the data. That specifically was requested by Benish to answer the question about what would it cost and what's needed. So we are still waiting for that information. Even as of just a few hours ago, what we heard is we might have some information tomorrow to share, but the team is working to try to get that information.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett.
That's it, that's all I had. So hopefully we can circle back on that on Thursday, then when we have the collective discussion. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Moving on to Reverend Cummings.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, very interesting meeting. I was excited to hear about the Marion County Scholarship that we're giving to our staff, our paraprofessionals, and our, our teachers that are in the field to get their masters and those to get their bachelors, those parents. I think that's a very, very, very good program. I would encourage our staff that, to take advantage of these opportunities. It's not often you get to go to school and somebody else pay for it. So if you can get the scholarship, please get it, and please go. It's only going to help better our, our district. Again, it was great to see the Family Focus Mobile Unit. That is a resource that I think that will be very beneficial throughout our county, and I, and I was serious when I said I think we need more because there are so many students in this county that are underserved and that are not, that one is not going to do. And I know we said it's just for certain events and all those types of things, but I could see, just envision it being used for so much more and really helping those, those outer layering areas in the county, give them access to some, some needs, some needs, some, some help. So I'm looking forward to that going forward as well. Again, I said this on Thursday, I'll say it again, congratulations to Mrs. Nida Hendry at Hillcrest, who was our, our Florida Art Education Association winner for twenty twenty-three. She is a tremendous teacher, tremendous art, art teacher, tremendous individual. Anytime you have folk at school with Hillcrest who deal with kids that are different, but are not different, and I could say that because I have a son that's there, that's like that, that's a special needs son, they're different, but they're not different. They're still kids, they're still individuals, and they still deserve the same opportunities. So when you have people that have the heart and the passion to work with those kids, that group of kids, I, I truly appreciate that. So congratulations to Ms. Hendry. And then finally, I want to say, and I said, I said on Thursday, staff is open enrollment. Don't let open enrollment pass by, and you don't make the necessary changes to your benefits. Oftentimes, oftentimes, we, we have intent of doing certain things, and before we know it, that date is already passed by, and once it's gone, you can't, you won't come around and enter next year. And I, I just encourage you to look at what's offered through our district. We have actually some great benefits in our open enrollment packages. And sometimes we say, let me say this, sometimes we say that it's costly. I can't afford it. Well, we live in a day and age where you can't afford to not have insurance. You can't afford not to have some coverage when you go to the hospital, to the doctor. So, and I, I just want to encourage you to, to take a look at it with your families and, and get those things that you need and, and cover yourselves. Make sure your family's covered, look out for yourself and your family. So again, open enrollment ends in a few days, in a few weeks, couple, couple of days now, November the third. So please make sure you make the necessary changes. That's my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Conrad?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I do have a little hot list to run down. Some items are the same, but I did want to reach out to our students and say, we're in a new nine weeks. You're starting with an A or a one hundred, so just make sure to put your best foot forward. It's a clean slate. We want to see you do well. Put your energy into making good choices and completing your work. So I just wanted to mention that. Recently, I've been working on golden apple portfolios, and I just wanted to say that we are very blessed here in Marion County. It is really very emotional to read each teacher's story. And so I just want to give a shout out to all those who put such a great effort into assembling their portfolio and sharing it with us. Also, I had met with the Friends of Veterans Park. There will be a program on November tenth, which is a Friday, and invite all of you to come. It's a family event, and three of our schools will be performing. We've got Shady Hill, Howard Middle, and Forest. So please show up and support our school and enjoy a live celebration for Veterans Day. So I hope to see you there. Really, Ms. Hughes out there herself, I was just so excited about, I don't know if I got the name right, I was trying to catch her before she left the podium, but Family Focus Mobile Unit? Is that it? I'm just really excited. Coming from the classroom recently and seeing a nice, clean, up-to-date classroom that can meet our students and our families where they are is just very exciting, and it's motivating, and it's a positive in every sense of the word, and, and I think the kids will feel excited to visit our mobile unit. So I really am looking forward to seeing that in action. I asked when we were outside, how can we get school's name on the list? And evidently, there's already a few that have their name on the list, even though we don't have a driver yet. So I think that the district is excited as the board is. So what a great new tool for us in Marion County. So super excited, I can't say enough about that. This afternoon, I had the privilege with other board members to attend the O'Callaghan High dedication, and I just wanted to say that it was beautiful and it was heartfelt. You really could feel the love and commitment that they had for their students, and so I was happy to be a part of that and appreciate the work that they're doing as they take on this new challenge to open up a high school. So that was great. A couple of weeks ago, I kind of issued a challenge out to District Two, and I haven't said anything in a couple of weeks because I didn't get anything, but I got a box today. So kudos to Bellevue Middle. Got my Friday spirit shirt. I'm trying to catch up with Dr. James. So thank you, Bellevue Middle School, for my T-shirt and my magnet. I'm super excited and looking forward to getting another one. Want to welcome our new representatives, Bryce and Olivia. We're super happy to have you and so excited for your input on our board. So thank you for being here tonight. My last comment, I wanted to share that in our regular agenda, we went through some school audits, and there were a couple of schools that it looked like they were struggling. And so when I reached out and, and talked to different people, I was happy to hear that we have strategies and procedures in place to help those schools move forward. And so I was pleasantly surprised to hear about that. And I also wanted to note that we had two schools that had a perfect audit, and that was Besiden and Liberty. So just really, there's so much work that goes into that, so much paperwork and documentation. So congratulations to those two schools, and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you. And yes, so many fun activities and inspiring opportunities that just seem to be growing in, in our district in, in every good way. And I will start again with a really fun activity, and it's also very inspiring to have Bryce and Olivia with us. I was already thinking, well, Bryce wants to be an attorney, and, you know, and there's a school board attorney sitting down there to the right, so you'll have a chance to see what that's all about. And then I was thinking- And then I was thinking about Olivia, you were talking about wanting to be a pediatrician, and you know, we're surrounded by kids, so you're getting a chance to see a lot about that. And I understand you also play tennis.
Yes, I do.
Awesome. And I played tennis before they invented pickleball, so we need to have some more conversation, maybe. But it's just wonderful to have you. It's an uplift, you know, to have you on the stage with us. So thank you for wanting to do that. And just, it makes me think about all of the families and all of the students when I think about the fun activities, you know, Red Ribbon Week and Spirit Week and Homecoming and Princesses and Kings and, you know. We want, I believe, as a board, for every single student to be able to have these opportunities. We are dead serious on making sure that our attendance is elevated. We're dead serious on making sure that our transportation challenges are solved. We're dead serious on students' behavior. I was so inspired by the Advanced Scholarship online opportunity because there is nothing better for kids to see than adults working to better themselves, you know? And I wish that that opportunity had been available when I started as a para because it is expensive, you know, to take the coursework so that you can then become a teacher. But the kids will, they'll cheer for you. You know, I still remember that when I passed my, both of my general knowledge tests, and it was Mr. Stroup, actually, from Reddick, that was subbing my class at North Marion High. And I called my classroom because I was so excited and so relieved, and they were all cheering because they were the ones that said, Ms., you should become a teacher. And I said, I see how our teachers work and what they have to go through. But that really is the culture and the spirit that we've always had and that we are continuing to cultivate and elevate, and I couldn't be more excited about that. And I too was thrilled to see the Family Focus Mobile Unit. It's just another example of our commitment to making sure that each and every child has the opportunity. And I'm a horse girl, so I'll just say this, you can lead a horse to water, whether or not they choose to drink is up to them. So I'll encourage everyone to keep that in mind, and please come and avail yourselves of all the great opportunities we have in Marion County public schools. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. What a great meeting. We've had so many engaging and informative and educational opportunities this evening, from the mobile unit that we've all already talked about, to hearing from our employees that are now students again, potentially. And as a recent graduate myself of an online program, I appreciated hearing from our employees about their appreciation of the flexibility and workability of an online program for them to advance their education and being able to hear and learn from their peers in those classes. I know they're going to be so enriched by the opportunity, and it really is great. So Dr. Gullett, thank you for bringing that. I know you're a UCF alum yourself. Thank you for bringing that to the district so that our employees can truly benefit, and ultimately, the district will benefit from these scholars turned graduates someday soon. And so thank you again for that recognition that our folks received this evening. Wanted to also say kudos to Pheasant and Liberty Middle for their perfect audits. I always like to give a shout out to our perfect audits. And thank you, Ms. Conrad, for mentioning, there were several on this particular agenda that were struggling. I too asked questions and am grateful for the team that addresses those needs whenever we have them. And so when we have teams that are struggling, then we put plans in place to help them out of their struggles. And so grateful for that work that's being done all across the district. As a quick reminder to the board, ethics training is due in the end of the year. I completed mine just this past week. It was a great opportunity to listen in the car while I was driving, or excuse me, not while I was driving, while my husband was driving. And then also, you all received email about the legislative priorities that the Florida School Board Association has put out for consideration. If you have any comments about them, you can get those either to me, you can share with them right now, or you can share them with Daniel, Dr. Daniel Thomas from Florida School Board Association. The advocacy committee will be meeting on Friday to approve those. So if you do have any comments, additions, corrections, anything that you'd like to share, you're welcome to do so. I also attended the O'Callaghan Charter High School event today, the, I'm going to say dedication and ribbon cutting. We received these T-shirts from O'Callaghan Charter High School. So it was interesting to be able to hear, they've been birthed out of the Clear Choice Academies, and that the middle school that has been trying to consider building a high school for about seven years finally has birthed this vision into reality. And so the middle school has about 200 students with a significant waiting list, almost the same number as their current enrollment. And the high school has started with the freshman and sophomore classes, and really just a great kickoff today to introduce them to the community. We had the dedication ribbon cutting on the campus of the Living Waters Church, which happens to be where my family also attends. So that was just amazing to be a part of that and hearing all of the great things and how that pastor prayed for the right folks to purchase that property behind the church, and that's where O'Callaghan Charter High School is. And so that was just a wonderful opportunity and grateful for the fellow board members that were also there in attendance. We are a choice district, and having public charter choice programs for those students who need a smaller environment is just a wonderful opportunity that we have. Also today, we had our Public Education Foundation Board meeting, and so we did hear, as Ms. Conrad also was talking about, reading the Golden Apple portfolios. We heard from a couple of members today of the board. One is reading Rookie Teacher of the Year portfolios, and another one's reading Grants for Great Ideas. And so just a lot of amazing things. Both of them echoed the sentiments you said, just a lot of amazing things happening all throughout this district, and reading those portfolios gives you a bird's eye view of what that looks like. I also wanted to mention, and I have a little gift for everybody, so we today learned that the Public Education Foundation had applied for, I don't remember if I gave you enough or too many, but that they applied for a $300,000 resiliency grant, not 300, it was just under 300. I think it was 294, 296, yeah, something, 475, something like that. And so it was a resiliency grant, working with the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations. And as a part of that resiliency grant, they also gave us all these little armbands that says hashtag I am resilient, and on the inside, it says grit and gratitude. So these will be going out to all of our elementary schools, and then all of our secondary schools are going to have lanyards that say the same thing. So I wanted to make sure that all of us had them as well. So that was just a great thing at the Public Education Foundation. And can't wait. We heard today from Ms. Delnoldal and how they're ready to put some of those dollars to work in our schools, building resiliency in our students. And thank you for Reverend Cummings mentioning open enrollment. I also completed my benefits package today. So I mean, that was, that was a great thing that you've mentioned. Please, employees, take the opportunity, and if you have been a part of the family plan, please note that it is going to look different because your family plan last year was $100 more than your family plan is this year. That's not a typo, as we've heard in our insurance committee updates, that because of the health of the self-insurance fund and the needs of our employees, that is something that our employees are going to be able to receive as a benefit this year, will be a reduction in the cost per paycheck on that family plan. And as Reverend Cummings said, we do, this school district does have a lot of wonderful benefits and great opportunities for employees, so please take advantage of them. And as we wrap up, I wanted to express, Reverend Cummings also mentioned something that was very profound, and it gave me the opportunity to reflect a bit on this past weekend. I had the opportunity to go to my high school alma mater. I haven't lived in Tennessee in more than 25 years, but I had the opportunity to go to my high school alma mater and go to a high school football game and see some of my former classmates. The first thing I'll say is that the assembly that was held and the speeches that were given by the adults that were there were able to participate. The entire student body was in the gymnasium, and the entire student body is about 1,800 students, and their gymnasium holds about 2,300. So it's plenty of space for the entire student body. That's just a point of note. I don't know that we have a gymnasium on any of our campuses that could hire, hold our entire student body. So as we're considering moving forward with construction projects in various locations, just keep that in mind. But the entire student body was present for that ceremony, and every one of them were completely attentive to every word that was spoken. One of my actual former classmates was sitting with me, and he leaned over and goes, wow, these kids are paying attention. They're not, they're not even like, no phones, no one was on their phone. Everyone was paying attention for more than an hour in that presentation. It was amazing to see and just really inspired me. But a part of the speech that I shared was about the unique opportunity that I had, that my sister, who's developmentally and intellectually disabled, who has those unique abilities that Reverend Cummings was speaking about, that she attended school with me while I was there. And many of you know that story and know how that was impactful to me, but also seeing those students who were in wheelchairs or those students who may have additional struggles were also present in that assembly of the entire student body. That's something that my sister had the ability to do every time that we had student functions, and it really just was heartwarming and just something that I will never forget was the time that I had as a Cleveland High School Blue Raider at Cleveland, Tennessee. And so it was just a really great time to go back and be nostalgic about my own high school upbringing and hoping that my own children can have the same kinds of amazing opportunities that we have right here in Marion County public schools that I had in my upbringing as well. So that will actually conclude all of my board comments this evening, so thank you so much, board. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement lists for students through September 25th, 2023. Ms. Martinez, are there parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their children's disciplinary matters?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have four off-air speakers.
Thank you so much. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 24-016, JD 24-017E, JD 24-018E, JD 24-019, JD 24-020, JD 24-021, JD 24-022E, JD 24-023, JD 24-024, JD 24-026, JD 24-027, JD 24-029, JD 24-031, JD 24-032, JD 24-033, JD 24-034E, JD 24-035, JD 24-036, JD 24-038E, JD 24-039, JD 24-040E, JD 24-041, and JD 24-042, with educational services for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year and the first quarter of the 2024-2025 school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. At this time, our meeting will be recessed to reconvene at a later moment for us to have our off-air portion of this evening's meeting. We are recessed at 6:53 PM.